Okay, so we will go ahead and do the regular meeting now for the Waukees City Council. I did the Pledge of Allegiance in the last one, so we're not going to do it again. I realize it was not on the last agenda, it was on this one, but we already did it, so we'll let you stay seated. So with that, can we do roll call, please?
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Still here.
Councilmember Crone?
Here.
Councilmember Grove?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Here.
All right, Agenda Item D is open forum. Similar to the special meeting, open forum is for anyone here tonight to address the council on any subject over which the council has the authority to act, or on any subject on the agenda other than a public hearing. Because there will be a chance to speak on each public hearing as well, so if you are going to speak on something other than a public hearing, please, now is your chance. You can approach the podium. Similar rules as before in terms of three minutes to speak, and you'll have to state your name and address at the beginning. And again, if you are participating in this meeting via Zoom, please raise your hand via the raise hand icon in the reactions controls. All right, with that.
Okay, can I make a comment?
Oh, no.
There's some comments going on, we can't hear.
Okay, if we could keep cross talk to a minimum, if you'd like to speak, go ahead and just come up and get in line, or you can stay seated and then come up when she is done, we have no problem with that. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Linda Adams, I'm a concerned citizen, 350 Denly Drive. Madam Mayor, esteemed council members, Waukees recognizes one of the fastest growing cities in Iowa. It's located in Dallas County, one of the fastest growing counties in the US. The city is dedicated to economic growth, expanding business opportunities, including creation of the mixed-use development at Kettlestone, the $400 million development. The city has a budget of $157 million, which we just learned. The city is going to bring on two police sergeants, three fire lieutenants, five firefighters, one traffic signal technician, traffic engineer, and one IT technician. So I guess my question to the council is, why not hire an animal control officer? The national average is $47 per year, which is a drop in the bucket. My concern is, why is the city not taking care of the dogs through the contract with A Heinz 57? However, there's no contract on to take care of the cats. I know A Heinz 57's cat program was closing, however, there are other opportunities through furry friends, possibly maybe working with the city of West Des Moines, I don't know if you guys have considered that. I know on the February 10th, animal control discussion, no viable options at this time to address cats at large. However, cats need to be licensed in the city for animal control purposes. However, it appears there's no animal control for lost or stray cats as of April 1st of this year. As an avid animal lover, and that's dogs and cats, I implore you to please find a solution to help the cats in the community, whether it's working with another city or an animal shelter. You'll please also consider a TNR program to help control the cat population. Otherwise, Waukees in several years will have a huge number of unaltered cats, and it's their nature to create. However, us humans have created that problem, where there are so many unaltered cats in the city and within the country. Thank you for your time and consideration.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go ahead and come on.
There. My name is Rebecca Johnson, I live at 95 Northeast Badger. I've lived in Waukees close to 25 years, so I've seen the tremendous growth that people here have talked about. I brought a prop with me tonight, because I think this is a problem in Waukees, and actually probably most of the state, but we're here. And we're trying to become a model community, and this is what we're walking on. I took all of this out of about a 10 by 10 square foot patch of my lawn. This is what they use under the sod to maintain the soil and as they're growing it, and when they cut it, they roll it again, and they roll it out on the soil. Technically, it's biodegradable, but it is a plastic, and it breaks down into smaller and smaller pieces. It's on our soil, so as those pieces break down, they wash directly into our water, which evidently a lot of people have some concerns about. I've done a little bit of research and have come up with, what I wanted to know is if there were some alternatives to this, because when I've talked to lawn care companies and sod growers, I'm told this is the industry standard. Well, I don't think it has to be, and I looked for companies that maybe made a truly biodegradable product, and I only found one. It's on the East Coast, and they make, they sent me a sample, so you can really see the difference. This is plant-based, and it truly biodegrades. The reason I'm here is because I do think this is a problem, and I'd like to be put onto the agenda to bring a little more research to you. And in contacting this company, they would like to come here and talk to you, and talk to you about the products, they do more than just this, and talk to you about how they've helped other cities change their codes to prohibit this problem. So that's really why I'm here. I can leave my phone number, I do have a little bit of information for you here, if you want it, but that's what I'd like to do, is be put onto the agenda and ask you to consider changing some things.
If you can share your contact information with Andy, we will get back to you.
Okay.
It's Henry.
Rebecca, how long do you have that sod?
I've lived in our house here, north of the highway now, for eight years.
Okay.
This is supposed to biodegrade in three years.
Okay.
If it's exposed to light. This is in our parks. I've taken pictures documenting it around the city. Triumph Park has a lot of it. I've come across pictures of birds, reptiles, and other animals caught in this, and they can't get free, which is, you know, another whole concern. But to me, the issue is putting the plastic right into, practically directly into our water, and so it was kind of interesting to come here tonight and see there's other people with that concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and esteemed council members, I'm Gina Tuttle, and I live at 1520 Southeast Oxford Drive in Glen Village. I'm here to kind of support the information that Linda provided in regards to cats and animal control. So on March 19th, there was an article in the Des Moines Register regarding the new animal control agreement for Waukees that became effective on April 1st with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. So as an avid animal lover, probably cats the most, you know, I went out, I did some Googling on what that meant. So what do they do? And basically, to summarize it, it says that the Iowa DNR does not have a specific program or focus solely on feral cats, but they do provide resources and guidance related to wildlife, including feral cats and nuisance wildlife control. So basically, it sounds like they're going to give you information on what you can do, but it's up to the people to actually be accountable. And I don't think, really, at this time, we have a lot of options or a lot of information to actually send them to. We don't have TNR programs, you know. So basically, while we respect and we appreciate the amazing work that the DNR does, it doesn't seem like this is an ideal partnership for ensuring that our feral and stray cat population is controlled. It's just not a priority. Bear with me. So just some interesting facts, and I just found this out doing some research, but for feral cats, overpopulation is a very serious issue, because cats, like other animals, carry and transmit some serious, or they can be serious deadly diseases to humans. That includes toxoplasmosis, salmonella, and some viral diseases such as rabies and fungal diseases such as springworm. And moreover, cats, to survive, kill thousands of birds, and that reduces a vital non-toxic method of insect control. And then, looking at spayusa.org, they calculate that just one pair of unaltered male and female cats and their offspring will produce over 11,000 cats in five years. So, and that doesn't address community cats, that doesn't address stray cats, that little Johnny opens a door and their cat goes running out, you know, and starts chasing butterflies or ends up far from home. So we're just looking at, what can we do as citizens to help build out a program? I think there is a large group, I call myself a crazy cat lady, but a lot of us that really have a passion, we see that the dogs get a lot of focus, but these cats, to people that have them, you know, they're just as important in their lives as a dog. And these feral cats, a lot of them have been dumped, or, you know, they're just, they've gotten out and they've not been found. Living in Glen Village, I don't know if any of you do, but there's a lot of stray cats, and a lot of them have gotten out, because, you know, I try to take care of them, I try to make sure that, you know, they are fed, and I try to trap them, but they're ornery and very smart. So anyway, I know I'm running out of time, but, you know, we're just curious, what other considerations, you know, were made? Is there hiring an animal control officer? And I know Linda talked about that. How about contracting with another shelter, that, you know, with help with TNR and stray and lost cats? I know when A Heinz, when the article came out that they were closing down, that the ARL mentioned they want to partner, they want to partner with the different cities so that we can all use our different skills and, you know, like areas to maybe break it out and be able to help control this population. And then, I don't know, maybe there's providing assistance to a shelter to be able to help provide services to the general public. So I think there's probably some options out there, if we'd be willing to sit down, have a conversation, you know, we could probably come up with some ideas on how to. I'm just concerned, I know our trailer park is overrun with a lot of cats, and if you think 11,000 in five years for two cats, it's a lot.
Thank you, Gina.
Again, I'm back, and it's mainly about this, I'm Veronica Lack, and Soil and Water Conservation Commissioner. Glycophate is an issue, we cannot right now filter it out of our water, it tests positive in 50% of US males' sperm. It reduces our birth rate across the US of humans. Now, it would not be a logical solution for the cat population, but it's not good for us. And we need to, in my suit, I was suing the state of Iowa and the Iowa DNR to let us know how we can filter out these PFAS chemicals, how we can keep our water safe to drink, but right now, there's no filter. It would, to take out these PFAS chemicals, we need to figure out in the budget, how are we going to get the billions of dollars just to develop? We need, we need filters, and there's, we need a made in America, that even for the nitrates, there was a county down that for three months, they didn't have water. They couldn't drink their own water, because their filter clogged, and where was the filter made? Out of the US. They had to wait for one, and it cost a million dollars just for that one county's water, whatever. And we need, we need to develop filters to get these PFAS chemicals out, because Bayer and ChemChina and their herbicides are here, and they're PFA forever chemicals, and they're limiting our families from having children.
Joan Ross, 450 Southeast Rosencrans Drive, Madam Mayor and City Council Members, I'm going to go back and make a comment as far as with pets. I too am an animal lover. I'm not sure if cats need to be licensed or not, but if not, they should be, because one of the things that I hear from so many people is, they let their cats roam, and I've been told, well, that's what cats do. Well, guess what? If I put my dog out, my dog will roam as well, and if it sees a rabbit, it'll chase that rabbit until who knows where before it stops. I will agree, when we have cats coming into our yard, pooping, I don't like that, and I don't like dogs pooping in my yard. And I know there's an ordinance that people are supposed to pick up after their pets. I feel that a responsible pet owner, be it a dog or a cat, will take care of those things. And I will agree, I think there's way too many cats that are loose in, in Waukees. And as you said, how they populate is by far faster than what dogs do, but anyway, that's just my comment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Very brief again, my name's Rich Peters, 110 Abigail Lane in Glen Village, and I've noticed, again, as matters of safety, a lot of scooters this time of the year, and I was wondering what the ordinance is as far as scooters, their speed, where they're supposed to be going as far as on the sidewalk. I have a couple of dogs now, puppies, and again, I ride around St. Boniface, I see fairly routinely scooters going at a fairly good pace. I can't estimate 10, 15 miles per hour, but when you're older, you know, young puppies, you can't move so fast, the puppies can't, but if they can get out of the way. But at any rate, I'd like to, if you have any information about that, if they're supposed to be on the sidewalks or not, are they, is there a controlled speed? Are they supposed to have lights on? Is there some type of safety education course these guys are getting? There is, I think they're populating like the cats.
Typically, we don't, we don't have a conversation during public forum, but if you stay till after the meeting, we can chat about that, okay? And that goes for everything. And we will try to get back to everyone as well. Okay. Are there any hands raised online? No, there are no hands raised in Zoom. Okay, with that, open forum is closed. Item E is Agenda Approval. Make it a motion.
Sorry.
All right.
Let's pause.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Okay, so Agenda Item F is a presentation from the Iowa League of Cities. There! Come on up. All right, so Iowa League of Cities If I Were Mayor Essay Contest.
Yes, my name is Katie Wheeler with the Iowa League of Cities. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and present the If I Were Mayor Essay Contest Award. This contest is a statewide competition for seventh graders, which asks them what they would do if they were elected mayor of their hometown. And we know that our future leaders are in our classrooms, and promoting good city government and further connecting our youth to our communities is very important to the Iowa League of Cities. The league has run this contest for 10 years, and every year, I read a lot of the essays, and we're always blown away by the creativity and the ingenuity of our Iowa students. And this year, we received more than 350 essay submissions from across the state. With the help of the Iowa Mayor's Association, one essay was selected from each congressional district, with a grand prize winner selected from these four. Through the generous sponsorships of Snyder and Associates, we offer each award winner a scholarship with one grand prize winner. This year, we are really excited to announce our District 3 winner, which is Kate Han. Her essay emphasized supporting children's health and education, food insecurity, and addressing water quality issues. So, a deserving essay that definitely impressed our review panel of Iowa mayors, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Clark.
Sure. Well, I'm going to actually have Kate and her family come up front, if that's okay, unless the family doesn't want to be in the picture. Yeah, so I'm actually on the, I probably can't hear me, I'm on the Iowa Mayor's Association Exec Board, and I get to read these essays every year too, and I cannot thank the league staff enough for narrowing them down, because 350 essays would be a lot, I only have to read 20, so that is huge in terms of that benefit. I didn't get to read our district, it was a conflict of interest, given that one of the students that was a finalist was in our school district, but I was thrilled to read her essay and to meet her family tonight as well, and to just be able to chat with them, because I think there were phenomenal ideas in the essay, and I just, she hit on a lot of issues that our community faces, and so clearly, she is paying attention. So that is huge, and so we'll go ahead and just do an award, and she can get pictures with anybody she wants, and her family up here, and then we'll move on with the meeting.
She wants to do for pictures. Anybody? You?
Okay.
She a Waukees resident?
Yes.
Oh, nice.
In seventh grade? All right. Okay, Agenda Item G1 is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance, city of Waukees, Iowa, by rezoning certain property from A1 and C1 to M1, a parcel known as I-80 West Industrial. I now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have we received any correspondence on this?
None received in the city clerk's office.
Andy?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. The owner in this request is the Michael Dean Sabatka Estate, and the applicant is Paramount Land Company. The property is located at the northwest corner of Interstate Parkway and U Avenue, and it's approximately two acres in area. The request is to rezone the property from A1 Agricultural District and C1 Community and Highway Service Commercial District to M1 Light Industrial for the development of a flex-use warehouse building. The site includes two existing parcels. The north parcel is the parcel that is zoned A1, you can kind of see, there is a black line that kind of runs across the, I guess I'll call it the top third of the property, that's the portion that's zoned A1, and then the rest of the existing property is zoned C1. The property is undeveloped at this time. Notifications were sent out, and rezoning signs have been posted. Staff has not received any correspondence either for or against the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the rezoning at their meeting, at their second meeting in March. The comprehensive plan identifies the property as light industrial office. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the comp plan. Light industrial office would be consistent with the M1 district. Staff recommends holding the public hearing, and this here is kind of a concept plan of what the lease is proposed at this time to be on the site. Be happy to answer any questions, but staff would recommend holding the public hearing.
Thank you. Does the applicant or their representative wish to address the council? Okay, does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and speak on this particular public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions? I now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda Item H1, Consideration of Approval of an Ordinance to Amend Chapter 169 Zoning Ordinance, city of Waukees, Iowa, by rezoning certain property from A1 and C1 to M1, a parcel known as I-80 West Industrial. This is an introduction and a first reading.
I introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading in title only.
Okay. Andy?
Staff does recommend approval of the first consideration for I-80 West Industrial Park. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Agenda Item I1, Consent Agenda. Make it a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay. Any discussions? Please vote.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I2, Consideration of Approval of an Ordinance to Amend Chapter 169 Zoning Ordinance, city of Waukees, Iowa, by rezoning certain property from R2 to R2/PD1, and from R2/PD1 to R2, a property known as Remington Point. This is a second reading.
Move to approve the second reading of the ordinance in title only.
Second.
Andy?
All right, so just a reminder here, this is located south of University Avenue and west of 17th Street, it's just over 15 acres in area. Again, just a reminder, it's kind of revising some of the zoning boundaries, the area outlined in blue on the screen. Staff does recommend approval of the second consideration, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? This is not a public hearing. Veronica? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I3, Consideration of Approval of an Ordinance to Amend Chapter 169 Zoning Ordinance, city of Waukees, Iowa, by rezoning certain property from A1 to M1, a property addressed as 33263 Ute Avenue. This is a third and final reading.
Move to approve the third reading of the ordinance in title only and place it on final pass.
Okay. Andy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This property is located south of Interstate Parkway and west of Ute Avenue, it's just over an acre in area. This is a rezoning from A1 to M1 to allow for a electrical contractor to construct a new building on the site to operate their business out of there. So staff does recommend approval of the third and final reading, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Item I4, Consideration of Approval of a Motion Approving Change Order Number One to Concrete Connection LLC for the Painted Woods West Park Project, increasing the contract in the amount of $58,540.
Move to approve.
Second. Matt?
Evening, Mayor, Council. So this change order before you tonight for your consideration is one that we talked about at a work session. It has two parts. The first part would be the addition of two pickleball courts and the fencing and all the surfacing that's required for that, as well as the adjustments to the grading to accommodate those two new courts. The second part is the addition of additional length of wire for the electrical service. So when we started this project and started to design this project, when we met with Mid-American Energy, they said that we would need a new transformer for this site. Since then, that was about nine, 10 months ago, since then, there's been additional transformers put adjacent to our site that have capacity. So the change order will be for $11,325 for the electrical component, which will, we will pay to the contractor, but the way these transformers work with these projects, we typically are getting an invoice from Mid-American Energy for the $15,000 for the the transformers. transformer. We will no longer have that expense of the transformer. So not a huge savings, but it's roughly three, three and a half thousand dollars of savings by doing it this way. Um, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? More pickleball is always good in this city. Very much in demand at this area, anyway. Um, please vote.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Okay. Item I5, Tenth Street Crack and Seat Project, Northwest Douglas Parkway to Two Hundred and Sixtieth Street. I-5A, consideration of approval of a motion approving change order number two to Grimes Asphalt and Paving Construction, increasing the contract in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. I get a motion. Move to approve? Second. Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up on the screen, you can kind of see the, uh, progression of this project. We started off with our original contract of one point two million and change. This is a joint, a joint project with the Dallas County as well, understand that. Um, change order one was approximately just under fifty-three thousand. And if you recall, we had conversations about extending asphalt paving on Meredith Drive per the adjacent property owner's request. You can see the, um, cost breakout there. Um, they did contribute as well as the, the split there between the city and county. Change order number two, two hundred, almost two hundred and forty thousand dollars is for as-built measurement quantities. And typically that's a, a common thing with asphalt paving is there is overrun. Um, and because we almost had two miles of paving of this, that's why the quantity seems so large when it comes to a dollar amount. Uh, but it is primarily of asphalt tonnage overrun as well as the granular surfacing on the shouldering. Um, I believe there was a little underestimate there on the width of what they put back. It was much wider than what they, um, were anticipating with design as there as well. So, um, so you can see that contract amount and then the, the, uh, city and Dallas County portions split there almost half and half. Um, and then, uh, we'll talk about pay estimate number two at this time, but that's kind of the summary of change number two, and this is, uh, recommended, uh, for approval by staff as well as design engineer. So happy to take questions if you have any.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Item I-5B, consideration of approval of a motion approving payment estimate, number two to Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents. I get a motion. Move to approve? Second. Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Other than just to point your attention to the screen also has the split there, about ninety-four thousand for the city, forty-two thousand for the county on this payment. Um, this will be, um, this is essentially the final pay, or pay estimate. We do anticipate retainage release after this one. So the project is substantially complete. So we're just not doing final acceptance yet. They have some punch items to take care of. So happy to take any questions, but staff recommend it's approval.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I-6, consideration of approval of a resolution approving revised site plan for Kettlestone Central Gymnasium to two thousand forty-five, twenty forty-five Southeast Glacier Trail. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Andy?
All right. Um, the owner and applicant in this request is the Jensen Group. Uh, the property is located north of Southeast West Town Parkway and east of Southeast Glacier Trail. And it's about just over fourteen acres in area. Uh, the city council approved a site plan for this, uh, project, the Kettlestone Central Gymnasiums, back in September twenty twenty-three for the two, uh, gymnasium buildings, uh, that are actually pretty darn close to being completed here. Uh, the applicant, uh, has submitted a revised site plan. Um, and really the two primary changes to that, you can kind of see the blow up on the screen, on the right-hand side of the screen here, is the original site plan only included one outdoor court. Um, they've now proposed to add a second outdoor court. And in addition to that additional outdoor basketball court, you can see the red, uh, building here on the right-hand side. Um, that would be a small outdoor restroom building, um, for when they have, uh, events out there. So those are the two primary changes to the site plan. Um, there's some landscape changes as well, but these would be the ones that you'd significantly see if you went out there and, and, uh, and, uh, when it, when it opens up. So, um, proposed elevations of the, uh, building are brick to match the, uh, two buildings that are out there. Um, staff is recommending approval of the revised site plan for Kettlestone Central Gymnasiums. I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? Originally with the one court that was supposed to be seating, uh, bleachers or something around it for when they held games there, is that no longer the case?
Um, I'm guessing that would be more of like a temporary type. They'd bring in kind of like a temporary bleacher seating type situation, um, because they're not showing it on the site plan anymore, so.
Okay. Uh, please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Item I-7 for Key West Plat One. Uh, Key, uh, I-7A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving preliminary plat. Can I get a motion? Move to approve? Second. Andy?
All right. Uh, so the owner and applicant in this request is APGPPLC. I always struggle to say that. Uh, I'll present on item seven, A and B, uh, here at the same time. Uh, the property is located south of Ashworth Road and west of Grand Prairie Parkway, and it's just under twenty-six acres in area. Uh, the property is zoned Kettlestone Retail Regional District. Uh, the preliminary plat and final plat include one lot and one outlot. Lot one would be at the southeast corner of the property. Area, uh, that was subject to is outlined in blue here on the screen. Lot one would be down at the southeast corner, and it's an acre and a half in area. And then one large outlot would comprise the remainder of the property to the west and to the north. Show you, can I hear, you can see, so I know this isn't turned correctly, but when you have, it's kind of tough to turn them and make them, uh, legible, but lot one would be kind of where my, up in the upper right-hand corner. No new public streets are associated with this plat. Access into lot one is provided off of Southeast Kettlestone Boulevard that was constructed a couple of years ago. Public utilities already serve, uh, the proposed lot one. Uh, public trail easement will be provided for the trail underpass that runs underneath Grand Prairie Parkway. You can kind of see, um, here, this underpass right here. And then, uh, in the future, there'll be a trail that will connect to that and then traverse the site from east to west. Staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat and final plat for Key West Plat One. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Any idea what's going there?
Um, I believe they are working with a potential convenience store on the corner, but for the remainder of the property, I don't know.
Okay.
All right.
I have a shift.
All right. Uh, please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
I-7B, consideration of approval of a resolution approving final plat. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Andy?
Nothing further, Ted. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
All right. Item J, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to reiterate, the budget, budget process is a two-step process. Uh, so tonight was the public hearing as it relates to the overall, uh, levy rate. Uh, at the April twenty-first meeting, uh, Mayor and City Council will be presented at a separate public hearing, the proposed budget in detail, in addition to the capital improvement plan for the next five years. So we'd certainly welcome any residents to, uh, those two public hearings as well